Good morning.
Morning.
Um, who else is on the line, please, so I can take attendance?
Brad.
John.
Jocelyn's here.
Todd Zimmerman here.
Sam Delong's here.
Jennifer, this is Mayor Fadness. Uh, my entire incident management team will be on this call and be part of the presentation day. That includes, uh, Fire Chief Steve Arusa, Police Chief Ed Gettart, Economic Development Director Megan Baumgartner, Communications Director Ashley Elrod, uh, Elliot Holgren, Deputy Mayor, and Chris Kreisell to the attorney.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer, when, right before we start the meeting, I'll just go ahead and have everybody, um, just present the, you know, present themselves for the record. Thank you. Okay.
This is David. I just, uh, dialed in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any speech, by the way?
Thank you. George, can you get the door? That's the garage door, see? Okay, it is now eleven AM, and, uh, good morning. I would like to call the April twenty-fourth, twenty-
This meeting is being recorded and are transcribed.
Again, good morning. I would like to call the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty special council meeting to order. Before we get started, I want to confirm those present for the record, and I'm gonna start with council members. Uh, Councilman David George.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilman Todd Zimmerman.
Here.
Councilman Brad DeReemer.
Here.
Councilman Sam Delong.
Here.
Counselor John Weingard. Councilman John Weingard, are you here?
Yeah, some- somebody's dog was barking.
Okay. Counselor Jocelyn Dare.
I'm here.
Counselor Pete Peterson.
Here.
Counselor Selena Stoller.
Councilman Todd Zimmerman.
Here.
Counselor Selena Stoller, are you here?
Here.
Uh, Counselor Selena Stoller, I think there's an- an issue with the-
Everybody needs to mute their phone. If everybody mutes their phones, then we can get through this. They gotta mute their phones.
Okay, Counselor Selena Stoller. Are you here? Can anyone hear me? Uh, Counselor Selena Stoller, are you here?
Cecilia, this is Scott. Uh, she had texted saying she's having some technical difficulties. Uh, we're working with her right now, and, uh, we'll hopefully get her up here shortly. You just hold on one minute, we'll try to get her up. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and, obviously, I'm- I'm here. Um, can we go ahead and maybe, uh, call on staff members to identify themselves for the record as well?
Yes, Cecilia, I will do this, uh, for my, uh, collective incident management team. Uh, this is Mayor Scott Fadness for the record, while that, Fire Chief Stephen Arusa, Police Chief Ed Gettart, City Attorney Chris Kreisell, Megan Baumgartner, Economic Development Director, Deputy Mayor Elliot Holgren, Ashley Elrod, Communications Director.
Great, okay. Is Selena, uh, on the- on the line?
I am. I am, yes.
Okay, great. So, for the record, we're- all the city council members are present today. I- I wanna thank everybody for- for this, uh, being here at the special meeting. Uh, let's now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In addition to approving the minutes for- from our meeting on Ma- on Monday, April twentieth, twenty-twenty, the council today has two items for its consideration this morning. The first item is a resolution of the City of Fishers establishing a health department, and the second is a resolution of the City of Fishers establishing a local fund to support the health department. With the exception of the consent agenda, we will take a roll call vote on the two resolutions being presented today. Additionally, the council has provided the public with opportunities to participate in this morning's meeting by submitting comments through the city's website, and so comments received have been distributed to the council members and will be included in the minutes of today's agenda. So, for the consent agenda, we have one item. It's a request to approve the previous meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Pete. Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second, this is Todd.
Second by Todd Zimmerman. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now moving on to Resolution R zero four two four two zero. This is a resolution of the City of Fishers establishing a health department, and a- and Resolution R zero four two four two zero A. It is a resolution establishing a local fund to support the health department. And now I'll ask Mayor Fadness to present both of these items to the council.
Thank you, Council President Cobol, and thank you to the council on short notice, I realize, coming together to consider, uh, what I think is a very important next step in our community's road to recovery. Before we discuss how we move forward as a community, I think it's important to reflect back on the unusual circumstances over the last eight weeks. March sixth was the first day that, um, I was notified by the governor's office that COVID had indeed reached the borders of Indiana. Not only Indiana, but Hamilton County and the community of Fishers. From that point forward, operations and daily life for, uh, this organization, each one of our employees in our community has not been the same, and probably will not be likely the same for any time to come. Over the past eight weeks, my incident management team, day in and day out, has worked diligently to ensure the safety of our community. And I wanna talk about the extraordinary measures of this team so that everyone on the council understands the commitment, the conviction, the compassion, the competency that has been displayed over the last eight weeks. Uh, from March sixth on, we have sent forty-three, excuse me, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand email to different, uh, stakeholders and employees with an open, uh, rate of sixty percent, which is unheard of. We have well in excess of a million social media, uh, impressions with fifty thousand engagements from residents and stakeholders. On top of that, our website has been visited forty-three thousand times to gain relevant information as the course of this pandemic occurred. We have conducted twenty-five different conference calls with over two thousand participants. The effort that our communications team and our incident management team has done to ensure the transparency, the leadership in the communication that is needed to keep a community calm and equipped with the information that they need is nothing short of extraordinary, and I stand by any of their actions to date. Beyond communications, I wanna talk a little bit about operations. In less than twenty-four hours after we were one of the first communities to issue an order asking people to stay home to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen, our entire organization decentralized in less than twenty-four hours. It's five-hundred-and-fifty employees that were here one day and the next day were not, all at the same time ensuring that we maintained our operational capacity and capabilities. And that's no small testament to our IT department and our leadership by department heads. During this event, we've dealt with a decentralization of public safety in ways that we've never had to contemplate before. We've dealt with two murder-suicides, one of which had an individual firing live rounds at our police officers. We've dealt with police officers and firemen, uh, being exposed to this deadly disease. We've had multiple people in our organization who have contracted the disease. We've had to deal with a number of very challenging issues operationally, and each and every day, these staff, this team, this incident management team, has come to work diligent to make sure that we can meet the needs of our community. And every employee at the City of Fishers has done so and will continue to do so. I don't share that with you to, uh, gain some sort of accolade from any one of you. Uh, I- what I know to atti- about each and every one of the folks on this incident management team is that they're actually grateful for the opportunity to have served their community in a time of need and will continue to do so. In that vein, as we enter chapter three of this, which is a look towards the future, it weighs heavily on me as the individual responsible for the welfare and safety of our community that each and every night I contemplate, how are we going to o- open our community in a way that inspires confidence for the resident, the employer, and the employee? We've had eight people that we know of die from COVID-nineteen in our city, and multiple people fall sick. We know, each and every night, I think about the businesses that have, uh, faced bankruptcy and financial hardship, the stresses that have been put on families and individuals. And over the last two weeks, my entire incident management team has done nothing but obsess about how do we move forward and how do we alleviate some of the burdens and concerns that befall each and every one of us in our community. With that in mind, to that lens, our team has proposed a bold plan of action that will inspire confidence among our community, will provide the necessary public health infrastructure to ensure that when we do open up, that we have the opportunity to do so in a safe and effective manner that we're not back in this situation two weeks, six weeks, ten weeks from now. We have put innovative economic development plans and policies in place to ensure that we can help those small businesses that they come back online. And we've done all this in a fiscally responsible manner, using less than fourteen percent of the cash reserve of one fund, not all funds, one fund within our organization. Let me dispel some of the rumors that have been going around and a bit of the misinformation that's, uh, at bay. First and foremost, this is not a tax increase to the City of Fishers. Secondly, this is not a duplication of services. The State Health Department and the County Health Department do a good job. There is an opportunity under Indiana law for us to make the decision as a community to deliver the services of a public health system at a local level. When doing such, the tax implication that was once at the county shifts to the local entity. In other words, it is a tax-neutral, uh, event. The county will no longer be able to charge a tax for services rendered for public health, and the local community will be able to use that revenue accordingly to establish and fund our health department. This is not about an inadequacy on the county health's perspective. As Chief Arusa and I were discussing this the other day, he put it so succinctly. We do not ask the state, uh, Superintendent of Police to patrol the streets of Fishers. We do not ask the Sheriff's Department to patrol the streets of Fishers. We know and realize that when we reach a certain economies of scale, that there is advantages to tailored, customized public policy to ensure that we meet the adequate needs of our local businesses, our residents, and our community. Time is wasting. Just since the announcement yesterday, twenty businesses representing over four-eight-hundred employees have already signed up to get more information and expressed interest in the Employee-Employer Testing Program. Two-hundred-and-forty-five residents have already signed up for an alert to know when they can start being tested. It is our intent, if the leadership of this council sees fit and approves this today, to move as fast as humanly possible to put the necessary public infrastructure in place and the economic development policies that have been thoughtfully developed into action so that when the governor and Dr. Box decide in their wisdom and with their information to open up our state, that our community will be safe, we will be effective, and we will once again prosper. The policy document that Deputy Mayor Holgren has shared with you and shared with you yesterday morning outlines in detail each and every one of these initiatives and the thought process behind them. At this point, President Cobol, I would yield my time to, uh, Chief Arusa to talk a little bit about the synergies that actually occur when we bring public health, we integrate it with community care medicine. Chief Arusa?
Yes, um, thanks, Mayor. I just wanna give you a snapshot before I start of, um, the people who are out on the streets with hands on of the COVID-nineteen patients. I was at a, uh, shift pass on me this morning at seven AM, and I can tell you that we have a hundred-and-fifty men and women firefighters ranging in ages from twenty-one to mid-sixties, some of them with newborn babies, and some of them who have some of the risk factors identified by the CDC for COVID. What effect this has had on our people, we've been on approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-six presumptive COVID runs. That means that dispatch believes that they may be infected. We go on these nine-one-one calls, and in addition, we follow up the synergy with our mobile integrated health program and our EDOs. Not only are we now following up on mental health patients and establishing a relationship, we're also following up on COVID-nineteen patients to ensure that long-term they can get healthy. Out of those one-hundred-and-twenty-six runs that I mentioned, and this is a short-term effect on our people, forty-four of our firefighters have been exposed, had a significant exposure. It's important to understand that none of those exposures have been on duty. They have all been because their significant other is a healthcare provider. So, our PPU program is working. We've only needed to test four firefighters, and none of them have been positive. While I'm proud and blessed to tell you that, I can say honestly that it is not sustainable. Every day we wait, they're at risk. The measures that we're proposing long-term will help us stay healthy and help our community stay healthy. They're gonna help us immediately mitigate and catch up to this disease and get our arms wrapped around it. They're gonna help us prevent it from flaring up in the future. They're gonna help us be better prepared, have a more effective response and recovery should that flare up happen. In addition, this is going to probably occur again. This is probably the last pandemic or disease that we're gonna have to deal with. And what we're proposing will help us in the future. Since we announced today, I've received calls from fire chiefs from all over the state asking what we're doing and ask- and asking us to send them all their documentation, and then following up with phone calls to talk them through all the steps. The state EMS director emailed me this morning and stated EMS stands at the intersection of public safety, public health, and healthcare, and I'm looking forward to seeing Fishers Fire lead the industry with an expanded public health role. That's from Dr. Michael Kaufman. He is the EMS director for the State Department of Homeland Security. So, this is very important to us, and please support us and provide the leadership.
Thank you, Chief Arusa. I know as we move into the operational phases of this department, which I know we're all concerned about our budget, um, we feel that there are a tremendous number of synergies leveraging the talented and dedicated public health staff and public health servants that we already have within our organization. Uh, since the development of this, uh, idea, and particularly around this ability to have a very strong presence in our community, being out right alongside that small business owner, helping them understand, how do you get back on your feet? How do you follow the appropriate CDC guidelines? Chief Gettart from the Police Department has offered up his team to help with that. And Chief Gettart, I was hoping maybe you could share a couple of comments from your perspective as a- our other, um, pillar in public safety regarding the program and its initiatives.
Yes, absolutely, and thank you, council, for, uh, this meeting. When this all began and we huddled around the mayor to figure out how we were gonna take this city, um, through this crisis, this pandemic, it- it was just that. It was a group of people that have never been through this type of event in their lives. And in law enforcement, there's no playbook, and in public safety, there's no playbook to lead or to take your community to where it needs to go, yet we've managed to hur- to jump over each hurdle along the way. Um, creatively and innovatively, we have led this state, I believe, this county and this state with some of the things that we've done to this point. And some of that lies in the decision to decentralize almost immediately to make sure that we save our employees so we can serve and protect on the front line. And it wasn't until we started having positive reactions within our police department that we started to really gauge, um, how serious this could become if we lost our public safety force to this, uh, to this, uh, crisis or this virus. And then the next step in getting our officers, uh, in public safety tested brought calm to the storm as to we- we would know if what officers were sick and how do we isolate them and how do we deal with it as a unit and as a city? And I think this has led us to be more confident in the line of duty as we go out and we educate our community. Moving that forward only made sense, um, when the idea came, and not from me, from the several collective individuals in the room, that our city figure out a way to provide those same services to the entire community. We get time and time again the question of what next, because we're out there every day. What are we gonna do next? What are we gonna do next? Like Chief Arusa, I too have made contact with every employee multiple times during this crisis underneath my command, and they're always asking, what are we gonna do next? How are we gonna protect our community? How are we gonna protect ourselves so we can protect that community? I gotta be honest, we didn't have the answer, but we have it now. And I think that we would play a pivotal role in the Health Department by, again, partnering up with our fire department, going out and help to educate our community back to opening up their doors. It's not a matter of if, it's when. Society is calling for it. We have to be ready for it. And this is a great plan to move our city forward, and we're a hundred percent behind this plan, and we hope that you will be too. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Gettart. And in closing, Council President Cobol, if I could take a moment, as I outlined all the terrific work and the hard work that's been done by this incident management team, I think it needs to be said that it has not gone without the personal sacrifice of a number of these team members. Through this time period, all of us, actually, at threat of an exposure, had to operate and run the city in a week-long quarantine where we were confined to basements away from our families. We were confined to guest bedrooms. Uh, one of us was hospitalized. One of us had his basement flooded. Several of us were trying to balance the ability to be a good parent at the same time as serving our community. And each and every one of these individuals had done so without a single complaint. And, uh, I don't expect everyone to appreciate the level of work that's been done here, and none of us, again, are looking for pats on the back. All we're looking for is an opportunity to continue to serve in the way that we see fit. So, with that, Council President, I would turn it back to you, and we'd be prepared to answer any questions unless our City Attorney Chris Kreisell has anything else from a- from a legal perspective.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Fadness and staff, for everything that you have done so far to- to help our community. Uh, I'm now gonna call a motion to approve Resolution R zero four two four two zero, the resolution of the City of Fishers establishing a health department. Do I have a motion?
This is Pete. Motion approved.
Motion approved by Pete Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. Oh. Second by Selena Stoller. For the discussion today, I- I wanna now ask each council member to provide any additional comments or ask questions. So, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, David George.
Uh, thank you very much. I, uh, for, uh, and actually, I just wanted to thank the- the mayor, the chiefs, and then, uh, the full team. I've been on some of those conference calls. I know you've had them with the council, but then I've also been on some of those with the business community, and I think it's been good to- to get the information out, and I- I know that you guys have had some sacrifices. Um, so we appreciate that time as well. Um, just to kinda go back, the way I'd like to do this, this, it's unfortunate, it's a conference call. I've got three main topics, and I was gonna go through a couple, um, headlines as to help you understand how I'm framing it, and then just ask a couple of questions, and then when I get to the end, then I'll turn it back over. And if you wanna answer then or wait for the rest of the council, that's fine too, but I felt like that was better than, uh, you can't really have a dialogue on a conference call. So, um, back to the first main topic I wanna go through is the testing. And, uh, I've got kind of a unique family where I've got one nurse, uh, one sister that's a nurse. She's in cardiac care, so she's a- an expert, uh, more so than I, in, uh, ventilators and things like that. I've got another, uh, sister that's a scientist, and she works somewhat in epidemiology. So, my family's actually been watching this for a little bit of time, since about December and January. Um, so I understand the- the value of testing. The other reason that that's come to the forefront in my family is my father's in a nursing home, and, uh, two weeks ago, they had, uh, one positive case. The CDC guideline- dead guidelines are to test when you have a symptom, and we're finding out that's too late. So, they had one case, uh, a week, two weeks ago, and, uh, now they have twenty-six out of eighty-nine residents. And when you test, when you have the, uh, symptoms, uh, people are just unknowingly bringing it in, and I- it's through no fault of their own. It's just different staff members and things like that, and once it gets in, to me, that's just a microcosm of the community. Um, so that's kinda why it's become important to me, 'cause my father tested, uh, positive on Monday, and his roommate, uh, tested positive a week ago and passed away on Sunday. So, I think it's important, um, to test, and it's important to test before you get the symptoms. So, I think, um, Scott, what you and your- your team are proposing here is important from that standpoint. Um, at the same time, I know that some of this, uh, the money that we're looking at, since I've been on the council, um, quite a bit of time, I know with Scott. I've been on seventeen years, uh, what, ten or eleven with, uh, with you, Mayor? And, uh, at the same time, we plan during the good times for when we have, uh, not a bad time, but something that, uh, that stresses us a little bit. And we have, uh, I don't really wanna call it a rainy day fund, but we have more of a- a protection fund. And that has a specific metric, and that metric is fifty percent of our revenues are held, uh, for, you can call it a rainy day or just a protection fund. And the reason that metric is there is because a lot of our expenditures are paid every six months or every quarter. So, that's why you hold half back, because you have a one lump sum payment many times, um, that Lisa will have to pay. So, that's why that we have that. Now, right now, we have a little bit above that, and that little bit is what I'm seeing that you're requesting for this amount. So, that gives me comfort that we're not going to go under that metric, and I would always be a note to go under that metric because, uh, that keeps the- the reserves there, so that I've been through two recessions in Fishers. Not saying we're going into a recession, but we'll be through some stresses over the next couple of years. But it's important to have that because our duty is to all the staff members, um, so that we can keep the jobs going and- and everything else. And you do that by keeping those reserves. So, it looks like we're going down to where our metric is, which is good, so we've got a little bit above, so we can, uh, work through this over the next, uh, number of months. Um, now with that, uh, for the testing, I had a few questions. Uh, you can just kinda write those down and either answer at the end of this or, uh, the other council members too. Uh, I agree with you that the government's going to, it looks like, open up, uh, maybe in stages in May. So, for this testing, is this any resident? And then also, whether they have symptoms or not, like I said before, it's important that I've learned when you're unsymptomatic, but if you just wanna know for your own protection, protecting others around you, I think that's an important component. Um, also, I assume that we're contracting with a certain, uh, lab for these tests. So, what if the test changes? What if the next two or three months, we have a different type of test, maybe more of a saliva test that's quicker? Will this lab be able to do that? Maybe they don't, or we locked into a certain amount? Um, based on the schedule, because my understanding is, it's not that everybody can come in, that certain labs, and- and we're setting up an apparatus, and there's only a certain amount of, um, openings for that, so the public can come in and schedule that. Uh, so I'm just trying to get a sense of how- how much that would be, uh, with the amount of money? Does that get us through the year? Does it get us through a certain number of people? Uh, and then also, we've mentioned businesses, and my understanding is, based on the proposal, so correct me at the end if I'm wrong, um, businesses can get in the queue, so to speak, but they would need to, to pay for, you know, whatever the, the test amount is, which, that's important, because it sounds like businesses are still reaching out, and a lot of times, smaller businesses, they might say, yes, I'd like to get my employees tested, but they just don't have uh the knowledge or the, just, they got to run their business, and they don't have time to set up a, a testing program. So by doing this, I think we're helping, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the correct way to look at that. Um, switching next to the uh health department request, um, I, I agree, and you went through some of that in your comments, but the health department is not new, uh, there are several many functions, great functions that the county handles, um, and then we pay them, I'll call the fee, but we pay a certain amount for that function to be handled at the county. Uh, so my question is, when it comes to the city umbrella from the county, and that fee comes with it, there are all the duties that would still come with it. So it's not like there's a huge savings, so I just want to make sure that we are contemplating doing the functions that were required. I believe that's the case, but I just want to, you know, clarify it in a question. Um, and then, I think you went through some of this, uh, or maybe Chief Arusa did, but I'm just, uh, why is this a request with the uh, with the other portion, with the testing? And I think it's because you need some synergies and it helps us use our staff, but also I'll open that up again, I think you've answered some of that. Uh, the next question is, what happens, say, in a year or two years, if things go back to quote-unquote "normal," and we say we're going back to more of a, the standard function that the health department did through the county umbrella? Would it go back to them, or, and this is an honest question, would they say, you guys took it and you're going to keep it, so it would stay with us? I just, I think I know the answer, I just kind of want to ask that and, and have that understood. And then mainly, how do we keep this in check going forward? And by check, I just mean two to three years down the road, if it grows, uh, I, I think that through the council, it's more uh different staff members, uh, we just need to make sure it has a certain amount of staff, and we can control that through the budget. Um, so I think that's how that process would probably work. And then the last uh big picture item was, and I don't know if it's in these two requests, so um if it needs to wait till the next meeting, that's fine, but I know that there's uh discussion about a, a loan program. So I just wanted to, if that's in this portion, if you could describe that a little bit more for me, or we can wait uh till the next meeting, but the main questions I would have is, um, is this a, a loan, or is it a loan through a grant? Because I've seen other, like the federal level, do something like that, and then is there a limit, a limited amount of money? And then if so, where would those funds come from? Is that contemplated um from a certain source? So, those are the things that I had. Uh, like I said, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Cecilia. And then uh Scott, you can either answer now, or you can answer with your team at the end of all the other questions and comments. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, David.
Go ahead, Mayor, uh, would you like to go ahead and answer those questions now?
I would. I would, so we, we're not duplicating efforts. And thank you, David, uh, for your thoughtful questions, and also, uh, I'm very sorry to hear about the situation that your dad finds himself in, and, you know, it's these stories that I hear time and time again that makes me more and more committed and passionate about trying to implement this infrastructure. To your question about testing all residents, understand that our ability to test and, and run testing programs is dependent upon having a local health department that would allow us that medical direction. So, understand that you as a council member, me as mayor, even Chief Arusa, we are not the people that are going to set the specific medical parameters for the protocols for testing. That would be, that would be an irresponsible policy position. That is why in part of the resolution, we're recommending that we seek medical direction from community health with a, with a very competent and capable doctor, Dr. Indy Lane, to be able to provide that medical direction. So those protocols will come from the medical direction, will be endorsed and overseen by the strategic board of the health department, which has to have at least three physicians and a veterinarian on the departments, the subject matter experts, uh, to be able to deploy that. The question about the businesses is a really great question. We are not paying for the businesses to have their people tested. What we're doing is we're creating the infrastructure so that we have uh the local testing sites uh staffed by our professionals to collect the test. We have the software and data analytics on the backside to be able to allow them to have access to the information for their specific business, but we're not paying for the test. We hope more and more businesses sign up, and but, in, in the time that we've been having this conversation, two more businesses have signed up to be a part of this program. We want people testing, the entire nation needs people testing, so we understand what's going on in our community. As for MCL or Mid-American Clinical Labs, it's a good question about the, the viability and the capability of this lab. This lab is backed by Quest Labs, one of the largest labs in the country, and I feel very confident that they can adapt and, and we will continue to work with them as this pandemic moves forward. There's a lot of discussion right now around antibody testing. I got a wonderful email from our superintendent of schools today, uh, very excited about our program and asking about what could be possible, even for next fall, as teachers contemplate getting back into the classroom. We're going to have the infrastructure and the capability to deliver so, deliver something really impactful for our community. As for the um health department, I think it's really important, again, to understand, you have a state health department, there are county health departments, and there are city health departments. We plan and will collaborate with those things at the county level that make more sense for the county to do versus those things that make more sense for the city to do. What we're saying in this resolution and in this ask of the city council is that we believe at this point, given where we are as a community and what we see going into the future, that the body of work that needs to be done at a local, customized, and tailored approach is significant enough for, for our community to take on the responsibility of administering public health services. That does not mean that we can't contract with the county for those things, so they are more inclined and better to be able to deploy. For instance, septic tanks and um wells might be things that are not something that we come across all that often, that we could contract with the county to work through. But what we are saying today is that we believe there is a body of work that needs to be done, that is Fisher-specific, that is worthy enough for us to um start this endeavor. To the point about the financial obligations and the accountability to the city council, each and every year, just like every other one of our departments, we will be before the city council asking for the resources to conduct and execute on the responsibilities that are bestowed on us by the state um law, as well as our own strategic plan for our community. That is your check and balance in terms of being able to manage the resources accordingly. I feel confident that we can handle these responsibilities, we've researched this thoroughly, that we will be able to handle the responsibilities associated with the local health department and still meet the financial obligations of each and every taxpayer in the City of Fishers while not creating duplicative processes or services. In regard to your question about the loan program, the loan program is a half a million dollars, that is not money tied to any general operating fund. This money is not coming out of the same fund that our police and fire, or our roads, or our public utilities um need their revenues from. This is money that through an economic development agreement that was landed several years ago with Modern Asia to build their new headquarters, upon the sale of that building, they had to return to the city a certain percentage of the profits. So this is money that was never budgeted for, it was never counted on for any type of core function in the City of Fishers. We are utilizing those resources to be able to, and I think it's frankly a little apropos, that through an economic development deal and smart economic development negotiations, we now have the resources to support multiples of other small businesses that are trying to thrive and survive in the City of Fishers today. The intent is that those grants would be competitive more than likely, because we probably anticipate a number of uh businesses that are interested. I think we already had thirty-five businesses already seek uh questions and interest in this program. But to show you how much uh transparency we're putting into this process, I am not a part of that selection committee. We're looking to our redevelopment commission, the chair of our finance committee, John Weingart, as well as the One Zone Chamber of Commerce, to weigh the merits of each and every one of those applications and make the appropriate decision moving forward. I think that answered all of your questions, David, and if not, I'm happy to follow up uh at the end of this uh discussion period.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
One other, uh, Megan's, I'm sorry, Cecilia.
Uh, is there any other comments from the staff or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Cecilia, Meg, Meg just wanted to clarify that the, the loan is only up to fifteen thousand dollars, and it is not a forgivable loan. This is not a PPP program where if you do a certain number of things, you get to keep the money and not pay back the city. That is not the intent of this. This is a traditional loan where the money would get paid back over an extended period of time with the City of Fishers. So Megan, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're going to now move to uh Councilman Todd Zimmerman, do you have any additional comments or questions?
Yes, uh, President Kobol, I appreciate the time. Uh, Mayor and staff, you're doing outstanding job, thank you for, I know you're working very diligently, putting in a lot of hours. Um, Chief Arusa, Chief Gephardt, thank you for those that are on the front line, uh, that, and I pray for their health and their families' health as they return home each night. Um, couple, couple of emails, uh, Mayor Fadness, I wanted to kind of put out there that I've received. Uh, the vast majority have been extremely positive. I did a Facebook Live last night, another one about a week ago, I believe. I've received a lot of feedback, just in general, in terms of people's anxieties, uh, you know, frustrations or accolades with regard to the city as we've been moving through this event. Um, but one of the things was, I, I did uh get a couple of questions recently regarding uh the health department and uh concern about expansion of government structures, uh duplication of services and using tax dollars of duplication of services. So I think you've already spoken to that, is there anything in there um else you would want to add? Because I, I think that, I think you've spoken to it, but go ahead.
No, I think it's good, I think there is a lot of rhetoric uh being thrown out there right now, and I think a lot of it is just probably not understanding the nuances of how this works. Again, the city, a local government, a second-class city, has the option to deliver these services on behalf of their residents. When they opt into doing that, the county health department no longer provides those services to the city, and they no longer charge the taxes associated with providing those services to the city. Therefore, it is not a duplication of services, just as if you were to say the state police, because we have a state police department, therefore, if we have a Fishers Police Department, there's a duplication of services. That is not at all what is occurring here, and um I think it's really, really important to say that. And the expansion of government in this regard, the only expansion of government that we're talking about doing is providing free testing to the residents of Fishers and providing a helpful resource to businesses as they start back up. If that's a, an unwarranted expansion of services and government, then I just fundamentally disagree with the individuals that might be saying it. Uh, Chris, I don't know if there's anything else from a legal perspective that you would want to share about the, the duplication of services comment?
I think everything you've hit on, Mayor, has been uh completely accurate. You know, by, by the uh Local Health Department Act, second-class cities have the authority and the ability to perform all the services that are provided to all health departments, and you've appropriately stated that we will uh take on those uh services and take them into our jurisdiction, so I think you've covered it well.
Um, and then the next question is, was regarding the two million dollar uh a year that was put out there, and the question came back, is that an annual, uh, or is that a one-time ask for testing, or is that really an unknown based on circumstances?
That is a one-time allotment for testing and the setup of testing. Now, again, I don't know how long this pandemic will occur, I don't know long-term what the federal or state intentions are for long-term infrastructure for testing, uh, but the two million is really for this testing initiative. Ongoing for the state, or for the local health department, we will have the tax revenue that was otherwise allocated uh to the county to provide the services to us to, to fund the operations of the health department. So that is a cost-neutral initiative. The testing is city saying, hey, look, we can provide this infrastructure, this is something we can do for our community to inspire confidence and get the community moving again. Um, that, I hope, to be honest with you, is a one-time initiative, so that uh long-term, you know, we find a vaccine, we find a therapeutic drug, and we're not having to provide this infrastructure. Um, but we believe two million dollars is a significant amount of resources, uh, and will extend, you know, a significant period of time within our community to help us get through this.
All right, thank you very much. So, um, I just want to say that I believe it is imperative for us to act now. I think that, um, you know, I never want to feel rushed, I never want to feel, you know, under the gun, however, based on the circumstances in our nation, we can't wait for the federal government to help, we can't wait for the state's government to help, and, and quite frankly, even the county, and it's not a, it's not a critique of any of those levels of government. We're responsible, Mayor, you're responsible, I'm responsible, we're all responsible for the health and well-being of our community and the safety of our community, and a way to get us back on our feet. And, and I am very much a person that would prefer government not be involved as much as possible in our daily lives, however, right now, it is imperative to act. The amount of people that I come across that are asking for testing, they want direction, they want to get their businesses back open, they want to get back on the ball field, they want to get back in the classroom, they want to go back to life. And i- if we wait, if we um, you know, debate and argue and worry about what, a very small fraction, by the way, I've received probably eleven negative emails or comments, I think, roughly around there, maybe, maybe a couple more, maybe fifteen. I've received several hundred texts, emails, messages, uh, you, you name it, asking for and actually excited about this rollout. Um, the, the people are, residents of Fishers are excited that we'll take some ownership and direction with regard to this. You know, when I, when I moved here in eighty-nine, we had maybe six thousand residents, I believe, and we have over ninety thousand now. It takes a new, and we're living in a, in a new world right now, on, in addition to COVID. And for us to be able to pivot on the ground, for our, our, our public safety to be able to know what they're dealing with more effectively, and getting the data real-time uh to our residents uh and our decision-makers is critical. So, I, I applaud you for, for this. I know that anytime you, you blaze a trail, um, you're going to have to, um, see, you know, some people that dissent or, or want something different, but it's imperative for us to act now. I would, I would recommend to the council, please, please, please support this, and that's all my comments.
Thank you, Councilor Zimmerman. We're going to move on to uh Councilor Brad Doremer, do you have any additional comments or questions?
Thank you. First of all, Mayor and your team, I want to congratulate you, you are doing a fantastic job. As a past mayor that have dealt with many county health departments, I'm not being negative, but there is no county health department prepared to handle this situation, and we have no choice but to do what you are doing. I'm very proud to be a citizen of Fishers, a city councilman, and here to help you with that. I've gotten many calls and emails from people saying, my doctor told me that I probably have the virus, I can't get tested in Fishers. This is ridiculous. I sure appreciate you starting this so we can help the people that do have the virus and people that think they have the virus. I live in Britain Falls, where all of us fall into that class that we're all vulnerable. The majority of the people are sending me emails as you're talking, wanting to know when they can get tested, they're lining up now. So I know the businesses are behind it, as an ex-entrepreneur, I would definitely be behind this and want all of my employees tested to protect them. Um, and the offer of the PPE to go along with that, the offer to educate the businesses to help them is just fantastic. So I know they're behind it, the chamber behind it, I've already talked to some school board members, they're excited about getting their teachers tested so they can get the school system opened back up. Um, we just need to get going, and if we can approve this in the next half hour, you guys can get started. I do have one question that came in. The test is for Fishers residents, the people that are within the limits of Fishers but are actually in the county, will they be allowed to be tested as a Fishers person? Will they be allowed to be tested as a Fishers person? Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Uh, and thank you for those kind words. Uh, the question about unincorporated, I think what you're referring to, uh, those people would not qualify. These are for tax-paying, uh, residents of Fishers who have the opportunity to seek this test and receive it for free. And then if you are employed by a business in Fishers that decides to pay for the, the test, at that point, obviously, we're fine with wherever you're from, being able to receive that test, but it'll be paid for by the business itself. Thank you very much. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to Councilor Sam DeLong. Do you have any additional comments or questions?
Uh, yes. First off, I wanna say thank you. All this information that have been, some questions being generated have been wonderful and very helpful to me. Um, my question after all of this is, just kinda looking towards the future. I know the Hamilton County Health Department has its own building. Where are they, we, where they do what they do, will we be doing the same here? Do we have funds in, like, allocated towards that? Or if that's the way we're gonna go, how will this work? Does that make sense?
Thanks, Sam. Great, great question. Uh, with our new headquarters at Fire Station Ninety-One, we have more than ample room to provide the, the base bottle services uh, associated with the Health Department. And Chief Arusa and, and his team are more than prepared to, to meet the logistical needs of the requirements set out by state law for the Health Department.
Thank you. The only question I have.
Thank you, Councilor DeLong. We'll, we'll move on to Councilor John Weingard. Do you have additional comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you, President Cobol. I do have, uh, uh, number one, some comments and a, and a question. Uh, comments certainly congratulate Mayor and his team for, uh, putting us together in such a, a quick order and under the circumstances that we're living under. Um, my question, and then I have a comment. My question is, the amount that, um, uh, do we have a sense of the, the amount that the bill between the County Health Department and us will be reduced by us taking over this, uh, particular part of what we're doing? You know, what, what will be that, how will that be, what's that revenue, that money that we don't have to pay to the county for this to, to, that we'll do ourselves? Uh, secondly, just more of a comment, you know, I'm, you know, I'm fortunate in that, you know, as many of you know, I'm a CPA, have my own CPA firm here in Fishers. Um, uh, unfortunately, my, my partner's wife does have the virus, but she's doing great. One of, you know, a number of my clients, unfortunately, have been tested positive. Um, but we're still working. I'm the only one in my office here today. Everybody else is working remotely. And I've got to see firsthand, uh, what's this done to our economy? Cause I, I've triaged people and helped clients through this process, helping them with the various financing alternatives that the government's providing, but also being more of a, I guess you last name, a business psychiatrist for, uh, for the last four to six weeks. You know, people think that even though my tax season's been extended, I don't have a lot to do. Believe me, I've been hunkered down, helping these clients survive, helping these business owners, many here in Fishers, survive and make it through this. Um, I'm getting nothing but positive, uh, um, you know, accolades about what we're doing. I have had some, some comments that it's an overreach. Um, but in looking at this, we need to get back to work. We need to get into an environment that's, that's safe, that we can transact business and get this economy going again in a safe, reasonable fashion. Certainly, my firm's gonna be signing up to, uh, have everybody here tested, um, to make sure that not only we're providing a safe environment for my team, but also a safe environment for my clients that are coming in. So, uh, it's been a, it's been a rough, rough couple of months for a lot of people. You know, fortunately, we've been, we're still in business, we're still, uh, taking care of our clients. But I've seen a lot of my clients go through some absolute misery. And things like this are what these business owners and what our community needs to, to continue to be able to operate, continue to be able to get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, to your question, uh, the, the amount, uh, in terms of tax revenue that would stay in the City of Fishers versus going somewhere else would be north of a half a million dollars annually, which that, along with the synergies that come with working with our fire chief, working with our fire bureau that already does inspections. Think about this, uh, one of the responsibilities of, uh, a local Health Department is to go out and inspect restaurants. Every year, our fire bureau is responsible for going out and doing an annual inspection on the fire hoods or the, the hoods in, uh, uh, in the kitchens. We're in every single one of those restaurants as a fire bureau. There are synergies there where if we train up our team and Chief Arusa's willing to lead the charge in this, if you wanna talk about a reduction in the duplication of services, we will be on the front lines of reducing those duplications of services. That's what we're excited about, and we feel confident that we can deliver the services at a local level, customized to what Fishers' needs are, and adaptable to whatever the challenges might be by doing this.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you. We'll move, move on to Councilor Jocelyn there. Do you have any additional comments or questions?
I do. Thank you very much, President Cobol. I appreciate the time. Uh, first, I do wanna say thank you to Mayor Fadness and the chief and his entire staff for not only shepherding us through this crisis, but creating this plan. There are many components to the new Fishers Recovery Plan that are very strong and certainly should be the focus of the city right now, like free testing, enhanced contact tracing, PPE kits, and especially the programs to serve our small businesses during this time. These are urgent matters. But I understand the only purpose for this meeting and the true responsibility of the City Council is the establishment and funding of the new, of a new city Health Department. So my questions today are, uh, to, uh, with the objective to learn from the mayor and his staff clearly and specifically, along with the public, why a city Health Department is necessary and the best step forward. Uh, so I just, I do have a couple of questions, a couple of specific questions. Um, Mayor Fadness, in all your years of leadership, I have never once heard you say that Fishers needed its own city Health Department until yesterday at ten-thirty in the morning. Um, so my questions are, uh, what specific deficiencies did you experience with the county's approach? And specifically, how would Fishers immediately be able to do better? And how specifically will local control do better, uh, independently than the county, than what we've experienced with the county?
Well, great questions. And you know, uh, the, the question about not, uh, having me ever speak about, uh, uh, the need for a public Health Department until now is probably apropos to the fact that, uh, I've never been in the middle of a pandemic until now. So we find ourselves in unusual times, Councilwoman Vera. Your question about why I believe ultimately this is in the best interest of the City of Fishers moving forward, all the things that you said we should be focused on and should be doing diligently regarding testing, engaging the businesses with public, public health, uh, setting up this business public health testing, all of those things, those are unlocked when we have the opportunity to create a public Health Department locally here in the City of Fishers. Beyond that, what I do believe long-term, and this is what I think is so important, and this is, you know, these types of, the, the language around insufficiencies or deficiencies in other agencies, to me, is probably not the right characterization for the context we find ourselves in. In my opinion, this isn't about what the county Health Department has done in the past or not done. What this is about is we find ourselves in a very different situation where public health now has to be integrated at a very, very localized level. And the ability to work, my public health team to be able to work directly with Megan Baumgartner, with an economic development person, to go out and work with that business to get them back on their feet, for Chief Arusa and the paramedics to be able to identify clearly what, what is happening from a population health and do preventative and proactive measures, to work with the police department when we have issues. All of those things come into alignment now with the opportunity to provide customized local issues. Not to say that there isn't a role for county health for certain things that might be outside the specifics of our localized issues in Fishers. But I believe that the scales have tipped to a point where it's necessary to put that infrastructure at the local municipal level. It is not about a deficiency of what they've done in six years ago or five years ago or two years ago. This is about looking forward, and that is our focus.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, can I add to that? May, can I add to that real quick, Mayor? Um, when we started down this path and we started to investigate whether this is a good move for the city or not, um, I began to reach out and investigate everything and that a Health Department could encompass to better our city even moving forward. And I think one of the things that needs to be stated and said is that this particular department could help us, educate us, and statistically be ready for anything that comes in the future for Fishers. And I think that that's important to note because w- we, we know from national news and national correspondence that we believe there'll be another wave of this coming in. And I would say the deficiency isn't necessarily on anybody, but maybe even myself to some degree cause I, I needed to be better prepared, equipment-wise, gloves, masks, and so forth, that I'll be able to lean on and work with the fire department so that the next time I can be even more ready for something like this to strike. None of us in this community, none of us in this, in the United States were ready for this pandemic. And I think we owe it to our community and we owe it to, to everyone involved to be ready for the next one to come around because there will be a next one. Thank you.
Councilor Vera, uh, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate that, um, that information and perspective. And I do understand where we find ourselves now is this delicate balance of local control to be able to serve our Fishers residents the best way possible, uh, today and for the years ahead, and also develop this smart, valuable collaboration with the county and frankly, other, uh, entities, uh, especially in a pandemic where city boundaries don't mean a thing, right? So, uh, just another question if I, if I may. I'm concerned about the diversion of a half a million dollars at this time from the Hamilton County Health Department. What effects they will feel from that? And, uh, to be certain that they're still serving, uh, the residents that they're to. But, uh, have, have, Mayor Fadness or anyone from your staff there, have you asked how this creation of a Fishers City Health Department will disrupt the county or affect the county Health Department?
Uh, a couple of things, and I appreciate such a regional perspective, uh, from you, Jocelyn, on this. And, uh, certainly, uh, as a leader in regionalism around central Indiana, I can appreciate that. Couple clarifying points. First and foremost, the workload. There should be a direct link, if we think about this, where the tax revenue that a Fishers resident's paying out of their pocket for those services should be reflective of the workload that is being done at the county. If we take that workload off of the county and we're now doing it locally and that tax revenue comes to the Fishers, then I feel that that's a pretty fair and adequate adjustment and makes a lot of logical sense. Um, from, from the perspective of when this occurs financially for the county, this fiscal year, they will continue to have their budget. We're sitting in April, and the, the, the next chance that this would occur in terms of that money coming to the City of Fishers wouldn't be till fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, not till January first. Which, in the grand scheme of what we're all going to be dealing with financially, um, I doubt that that will become a significant issue long-term.
Thank you. Um, but ha- has that conversation, yeah, like, yes or no? Have you or someone from your staff talked to the county Health Department about this plan moving forward and how it will affect them and how the two entities will work together? Has that conversation happened?
A letter was sent yesterday, notification was made to a board member at the Public Health Department as well as the county commissioner, and we look forward to future conversations on how we can collaborate.
Well, especially since there seems to be no deficiencies in how the county Health Department is performing. Um, and again, finding that balance between local control and being able to serve our residents the best way we possibly can. I'm going to strongly encourage some better collaboration between the city and the county. I would hate to be in a situation in haste to create a brand-new city department that could have been alleviated with just some better communication and, uh, cooperation. Uh, my, m- my concern right now is if it wouldn't be more prudent to allocate two million dollars to a testing task force, uh, rather than taking on so many extra responsibilities and expense of the, of a new city Health Department. That's, that's my concern. And frankly, I'm inclined to recommend that this vote be postponed for simply one week so that some of these good conversations and information can be gathered. Um, I think our residents deserve that. I do appreciate, though, the urgency of this, um, more, more than ever. I know I stepped forward on April second and shared information about, uh, suggestions of creating a task force. So I know, uh, urgency is very, very important here, but I do not wanna move forward in haste. Um, that's, that's the conclusion of my comments. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vera, and, uh, I guess we will have to agree to disagree in that in the middle of a pandemic when people are getting sick and dying, now is not the time for task force or committees and feasibility studies, but rather swift and decisive action to ensure the services that our community so direly needs gets done effectively. But I respect and appreciate your comments and coaching, and we'll always take those to heart. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll agree to disagree on some, but we'll continue to work diligently to, uh, foster good relationships with our partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to, uh, Councilor Pete Peterson for additional comments or questions.
No comments or questions.
Thank you, Councilor Peterson. We'll move on to Councilor Selena Stoller.
Yeah, I, I want to recognize the mayor and his staff for putting together a well-thought-out plan for reopening. I know they've been working on this for weeks. Thank you for all of your love and attention for our community. The administration's plan addresses the critical elements of reopening, and one of those critical elements is testing and capturing the data to mitigate the spread within our community. I know that Governor Holcomb and the State Health Department recognize this, and I'm glad that Fishers is being a leader in how communities should open. I'm sure the other municipalities will review this plan and consider some elements of it for their own communities. So thank you, Mayor Fadness, for your leadership and innovation within these difficult times. Um, the p- plan has been praised by many local businesses in the community, and it makes them glad that their business resides in Fishers. I, I recognize the lack of understanding of a few residents that feel that this is a duplication of the county Health Department. To have testing more localized is beneficial to all residents. It's not a duplication, it's a localization. And Fishers will have localized data and localized means to aid in the mitigating of the spread of the virus. It's tax-neutral as allocations, as it's a reallocation of funds. Um, honestly, it disappoints me some that have been anxiously awaiting this plan, even pushing for the plan to address the health issues and the businesses reopening now that the plan is here and the state is on the verge of reopening, and now they want to delay it. The city's administration needs time to get the new Health Department ready for reopening. I see no benefit to the residents to delay this as it will delay the department's preparation for reopening. There's already a tight timeline, and to properly reopen, we need to fund this department so that those preparations can be completed. I am sure that there will be collaboration between the state, the health, uh, and the county Health Departments and the Fishers Health Department. And I look forward to the benefits to our community, many of which have been outlined here with the questions and by our public safety representatives and by the mayor and his staff. So I don't have any questions, but that is my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stoller. I don't have any additional questions at this time. They've all been answered. But what I just wanna say is thank you to the City of Fishers staff and mayor for everything. for everything that you've done thus far. Um, these, these are unprecedented, present in times because of the COVID-19 health emergency. And as elected leaders, these are the times when we have to step up and make difficult decisions during emergencies and challenges. And, and, um, this is ob- obviously a time where, where we need to, to make bold decisions for the benefit of our community. And I do believe that these resolutions today are the best, are in the best interest of our community, um, during this health crisis and economic crisis. It, it really has impacted our citizens' way of life. It's placed hardships on our families, on, on our business community and our mental and physical well-being. And I think this bold approach will meet the needs of our community. And as we've always led, Fishers has always led the way with various initiatives that are being recognized, you know, statewide and nationally. And I believe that this is a plan that will again be a proactive solution to get the residents back to living their daily lives and providing the Fishers businesses with a way to safely make an economic recovery. And with that, I am going to ask, uh, right now if we can do a roll call vote on Resolution 042420. It is the resolution of the city of Fishers establishing a health department. Can I have the clerk take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, um, Selena Stoller.
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Aye.
John Weingard.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Joshua Winver.
Nay.
Okay, motion passed. We are now moving on to Resolution R042420A. This is a resolution for the city of Fishers establishing a local fund to support the health department. Um, do we have a motion to approve R042420A?
Motion to approve.
This is Pete. Motion to approve.
Pete, you're Pete.
You got it. It's all good, John. I think John got it.
Motion to- Motion to approve by John Weingard. Do I have a second?
Sure, a second.
Second.
Uh, second by Todd Zimmerman?
Yeah, yeah, that's mine.
Okay. Again, for, uh, discussion purposes, I, I'm now gonna ask each council member whether they have any additional, um, comments or questions. Uh, we'll start with David George.
I do not have anything additional. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, Councilor Todd Zimmerman?
No additional comments or questions.
Thank you. Councilor Brad DeReemer?
Uh, just as a city councilman, I'm proud to back this project and let's get going.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Councilor Sam DeLong?
No additional comments or questions.
Uh, thank you. Councilor John Weingard?
No comments or questions.
Uh, thank you. Councilor Vera?
Yes, just a comment, I think. Um, I recommend that funds be, be devoted to free testing and contact tracing measures, PPE kits, definitely a new loan program for small businesses, all those elements that have been stated in the Recu- Fishers Recovery Plan. But, um, the resolution that was presented to us states, uh, the council hereby authorizes the controller to expend $2 million of already appropriated and available funds from the general fund to the health fund for the establishment of the department, meaning the new city of Fishers Health Department. So, uh, with that being said, this resolution does, with, with that statement there, uh, I believe, and please correct me, uh, says that the funds will be used for the establishment of the department. And the specific tools that we've talked about and stated the need for have not been specified in this resolution. Is that correct?
Councilmember Vera, this is, uh, Chris Greisel. That is correct. Your, your authority as a council is to make sure that there are funds established in the department. The Department of Health, which is established now, will have a Board of Health that will oversee and oversight, uh, the direction of the department with the funds that have been appropriated to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vera. We'll move to Councilor Pete Peterson.
No comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Selena Stoller, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any comments or questions on this, so I'm now gonna call a vote for Resolution R042420A. It is a resolution for the city of Fishers establishing a local fund to support the health department. I ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson. John Weingard.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Joshua Winver.
Aye.
All members voted aye. Hello?
Is everybody there?
Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Uh, the motion has passed. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, any comments that were submitted by residents have been received and distributed among the council. Uh, those comments were, will be placed on the record for this morning's meeting as if the members presented those comments during the community comment section. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We're moved.
Motion, motion to adjourn, Todd.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for gathering today for this, uh, special council meeting. I, I wish, uh, our community the best as we move forward with the leadership of the mayor and his staff. Thank you, everybody, for your leadership today.
Yep, thank you again, Mayor, your staff for everything. I mean, it's really appreciated.
Me- meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is no longer being recorded or transcribed.
Hey, this is Pete. I got cut off.